So what we can do is have Mark, Mark do the role real quick. I think we have everybody who is coming from the commission assigned in now. So if you want to do the role is also a sound check and then I'll do our read in and then we can turn things over.
Okay, for the role, Greg Masad. Karen Barnett.
Here.
Patrini.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale. Joe DeBono.
Here.
Okay, you have four members present.
I want to see Joe as a regular member tonight, so we'll have four regular members for the activities in front of us. Anybody want to approve the minutes of January 25th, item number two?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from January, January 22 or January 11? Twenty five.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Karen, second by Karen, approve the minutes of the January 25th, 2022 meeting. All saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three, nothing. There, right?
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, I wasn't there, I'm going to stay.
Okay, so we're all set on that. Number three, receipt of applications. Number PL dash 22 dash one. Abby, want to just tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, I'll defer to Mark since he's been working with the applicant on this one.
Sure, this.
I'm sorry, I mean, to count out Mark, where we're, where we're supposed to do it, I don't know.
Okay, PL 22 dash one is a request of Waterford Woods LLC owner, the applicant. This for a modified site plan approval for multi-family development at 384 and 394 Willis Avenue Extension. CMF Zone in accordance to section 22 of the zoning regulations and as shown on plans and title. Waterford Woods Phase Two Site Development Plan. Action on this application is required by 5/11/22. This is a Phase Two project, adding three more residential buildings to what the commission had already approved for the multifamily project on Willis Avenue with existing three multifamily buildings and a clubhouse.
Hey, great. It is just for receipt of applications, we're putting them on the agenda now for members of the public that are listening. So that you'll know what's coming on to the future. Sometimes we just receive the application that night. We don't know what we're receiving, you don't know what we're receiving. So we're trying to put that on the agenda so you'll know that sometime in the next couple of weeks, we'll be addressing that project. Item number four, the continued public hearing and possible action on opt-out provision of PA 21-29 concerning accessory dwellings. We started the public hearing, the last meeting that we had, we continued it until tonight. We had an interim meeting canceled because of lack of form, we want to continue that tonight. I would like to just say that tonight is limited to the specific issue of whether to opt out of the public act. It's not acting on any future accessory dwelling unit regulations that this commission may deal with in the future. If the choice is that the commission opts out of the public act, I believe the commission members will probably do that with the reasoning that we will adopt our own regulations. And at that time, we'll have another public hearing where the public can come and give us all the pros and cons and comments on the proposed regulation. So we have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I would just ask that anybody who wants to speak is more than welcome. I'll never limit you from speaking, but if you could understand what the issue is and that it's solely opting out or not opting out. Abby, do you have any comments?
Sure, just as sort of a general point of order, I'll kind of do a procedural piece and then Mark will read in the exhibit list that we have. And then I can go back through some of the key points from the original presentation, just to kind of summarize and focus things if that works. And then we can, if you want to open for public comment. So just very, very basic participation rules, folks. This, this meeting is being recorded and we will be posting recording to our town website within 24 hours of the end of this hearing. To ensure good sound quality, please keep your microphones on mute unless you have been called on to speak. If there's any audio or visual disruption, we will remove you or place you on mute to make sure that we maintain the order of the meeting. We will not be using the chat feature, so please make sure that we're, we're calling on you to, to speak. And so again, when the chair opens the public comment period, you can give your comments by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. And before the, the hearing is considered to be closed, there'll be an ask for any new comments. And folks who are only able to join by phone or who cannot use the raise hand feature will be able to speak up at that time. If multiple folks attempt to speak at once, we will help to moderate. If you have any questions about the process, you can always call us at 860-444-5813 between the hours of 8 a.m. and 4 p.m. Monday to Friday. And with that, Mark will read the exhibit list while I just quickly queue up the presentation and some of the exhibits that have come in since the last, the last presentation.
Okay, the exhibit list for this public hearing, exhibits one through six were previously read into the record at the January 25th public hearing. So with that, exhibit number seven is an email from Mary Childs to Mark Boytevitz regarding public hearing dated March 7th, 2022. Exhibit eight, letter from Tim and Kim Condorino to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated February 20, 2022. Exhibit nine, an email dated March 8th, 2022 from Joanne Davis to Abby Pierceall and Mark Boytevitz with the following attachments. A, one, public hearing testimony, ADUs. Two, AARP, ABCs of ADUs. Waterford, three, Waterford 2012 Plan, the conservation and development part one selected pages. And item number four, Waterford 2012 Plan of Conservation and Development Part Two selected pages.
Karen, did you have something you wanted to say?
I did, I just wanted to ask Abby to remind everyone to give their name and where they're from when they're first starting to speak as a reminder.
Thank you. Again, this is just where we're just going to do a very quick buzz through. This material has been, this presentation material is effectively the same presentation that was given on January 25th, just with an updated date and a continued public hearing title. However, the, the material is substantially the same and has been available on the town's website since the, the January hearings. There's not a lot that's new here for folks. Very, very briefly, so, so this is a law that was adopted, PA 2129, that went into effect January 1st. And it's specifically allowing accessory dwellings, referred to as accessory apartments in the legislation, attached or detached units subordinate to primary dwelling units on the property, single-family homes. There is an option that the municipality can choose whether or not to opt out of this law before January 1st of 2023. And so that is what's under consideration tonight is whether the commission will recommend to the representative town meeting that the town should, should opt out. If the commission does not make that recommendation at, at the end of the day, then, then the issue is moot and we proceed to modify regulations in accordance with the new law. So again, there's a few options that the commission has been discussing. One is to simply modify our zoning regulations to be consistent with the new law. Two is to opt out of the law and keep the existing regulations, which I think we heard our chair Greg explain that that's not been the discussion of the commission so far, that the existing regulations are fairly far afield from, from what PA 2129 contemplates and, and what the, the commission has been, been looking for, discussing in the past in terms of enabling housing choice in Waterford. And the last option is to potentially opt out, however, to change the zoning regulations for accessory dwellings to be substantially conforming to the, the legislation, but perhaps have some flavor for Waterford or specific standards that are, are things that the commission has been discussing is, is most important. So again, if to opt out, it requires the planning zoning commission have a two-thirds vote to recommend. There's a requirement to publish that decision and then a subsequent vote of the representative town meeting is required before opting out. So this, this is a public hearing as part of the required process in the act. We're not going to go too far into the accessory apartment element, other than it's, it's subordinate to the, the single-family home that's on a property. And again, it is, it is generally speaking, whether it's attached or detached is, is sort of a lesser size and impact than the main house. There are elements of the law that are pretty important to, to recognize. Basically, you, you, the town would need to designate the locations or zones where accessory apartments are allowed. Any lot with single-family dwellings would be enabled to have an accessory apartment. This is again for attached or detached. There are some size provisions within the legislation. Setbacks, frontages and lot sizes, you know, need to be less than or equal to principal building requirements. And we'll talk about this a little bit later as it relates to potential front yard setbacks. And then lot coverage needs to be equal or greater than what is required for the single-family homes. And so I think some of those may be points that the commission has discussed in some, some like in the past. There are certain things that the law does not allow. And, and these are important because these are some places where our current regulations are out of step with the legislation. And, and we really do need to be changed. Things like requiring passageways between principal and accessory units, requiring exterior doors unless fire or building code requires them. Parking space minimums, relationships between the, the occupants of the accessory unit and the principal unit. We have some of that in our detached structure or detached regulations and that's important to think about. And again, there's utility age restriction and other permit renewals that are not allowed relative to, to the new legislation. And again, so some of our pieces here don't meet the standards that the state has adopted. And so I won't read them all as they, they've been out in the past. But again, we, we are certainly not compliant in our current two sections. That 336, which deals with our attached units and 339, which deals with our detached units. So again, the new law is more permissive. It does provide flexibility to property owners to accommodate relatives, caregivers, renters. It just, again, it's, it's meant to provide housing choice and I think that's an important point. It does leave Waterford to slightly less control over building dimensions and design than in current regulations. And that's, I think, part of the, the discussion concerning the opt-out that the commission has had in the past. And some of those things involve elements like, you know, the potential to have a detached accessory unit have to be located behind the front facade of an existing home. You know, relationship, we, we don't currently have design standards for single-family homes in Waterford. And I, I don't believe that there has been a lot of support to adopt them. But one of the questions that has come up in, in commission discussion about this in the past is whether attached or whether detached accessory units should have some kind of design relationship to the main home. And then that, if we don't have that standard or those design standards for single-family homes, then, then under the new legislation, we would have a hard time adopting ones that are only specific to the accessory apartments. So some of the, you know, some of the points of, of question are fairly minor so far in conversation. But they, but they have led to a conversation about whether it's more prudent for the town to consider opting out and then review a regulation that is substantially similar to the legislation, but would allow for some of these design tweaks and then allow for flexibility in the future. Should Waterford find that, you know, as people are trying to permit these units, we need a different set of tools. But we had, we, we opt, we failed to opt out and therefore are bound to the legislation. So again, I won't reiterate sort of what the three options are. And again, if we don't opt out, we are obligated before the, the January 1st of 2023, when our regulations would become null and void. We'd have to amend regulations anyway. And if there is an opt-out, then it's, you know, again, it's that conversation of which elements of the act are supported. Reviewing the zoning regulations, holding public hearings, gathering more public input to make sure what is ultimately considered and adopted works for the, the residents of Waterford and then, and go from there. So again.
Are you still going? Okay.
I'll, I'll wrap it up.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
You're fine. As I, I outlined the, the quick, the, the next steps necessary. And then we're just going to move on to questions and comments. A couple of things just to make sure folks are aware of. Since exhibits came in since the last hearing. I believe that most of these have been provided to the commission and folks I believe are on the call who may wish to read these into the record. But, but again, I just wanted to make sure that this is the testimony of Mary Childs of Tim Condorino and Joanne Davis, who also provided some additional excerpts from the P O C D policy elements, implementation elements. I apologize, we can rotate that a little bit. And then a guide relative to accessory dwelling units put out by the A R P. And so those are all elements that I believe folks are on the phone or on the call and can, can review as well. The, the one thing, so as, as testimony is, is accepted, the one thing that the commission would need, should just be aware of is that if there is any move to close the hearing and take action tonight, in order to opt out, there have to be specific findings and the commission has to adopt and then state on the record the reason for recommending the opt-out. So that's something that the commission can work through if you get to that point.
Okay, thank you, Abby. If any of the members did not get a late email today, there is an email in your box with four attachments. I think it's the last exhibit, so if you haven't checked it, you might want to check it and see it. Ready for any public participation? Anybody want to speak on number four, the public hearing for the opting out of the provisions of PA 21-29? You want to use the raised hand feature in the in the Zoom program? Okay, well, how about Joanne? She's raising her. That's not the raised hand feature, but it's good enough, so.
I was looking for it. I couldn't find it quick enough, so.
Who's labeled as Joanne on the screen? If you can give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, I am Joanne Davis and my address is 14 Beechwood Drive in Waterford. And I thank you for, I thank you for the opportunity to provide my testimony to the commission regarding accessory dwelling units. The need for ADUs is well documented and as Abby said, I attached the AARP publication about the ABCs of ADUs for additional information. So that said, there's very little need for me to elaborate on the need and justification for them. Clearly, the Connecticut Legislature values ADUs because they passed PA 2129. And your decision about the question before you will likely impact your own plans for your personal future living arrangements as a private Waterford resident. So I urge you then as commissioners to keep those points in mind in, in the forefront of the discussion and in your own, in the decision-making process. Given the significant impact of the decision about opting out, I pose the following serious questions to you, both as commissioners and private citizens and residents who may be thinking about your own future resident, living arrangements. What criteria are you applying in making your, your recommendation to preserve PA 2129 as of right versus opting out? So be mindful that your current regulations, as Abby well explained, are not in compliance with 2129, but they may no longer be relevant and or optimal for today's environment. Number two, how do Waterford residents, both current and future, benefit if the town opts out? So the question is, what's in it for them? And to articulate the advantages for residents of opting out. Personally, I can't think of any single advantage of opting out of the, of the PA 2129. And thirdly, how are Waterford residents, again, current and future, ill-served if the town of Waterford opts out? So again, to articulate what are the disadvantages for opting out? And I, for example, they may be restrictive, limiting and devoid of flexibility over the current home design, which was not designed for an aging population. That would be a disadvantage, in my opinion. So opting out sends a strong negative message to our residents that our town leaders place a higher priority on the status quo, perhaps. And they're concerned about less control than on meeting the evolving needs of its residents. And if the higher priority for the commission and the RTM is to maintain control, how does the decision fulfill the commissioner's role as public servants? It's not a rhetorical question. So some important statistics about the home, the age of homes in Waterford is the median year they were built is 1962. That was 60 years ago. Eight hundred ninety-one of the 1409, or about 63%, were built before 1970, so they are 52 years old. And 22, 224 of the 1409, or about 16%, were built before 1939, which was 84 years ago. But these older homes were not designed and built for aging, our aging residents to live safely in their own homes. Residents looked to town officials to support them in staying in their own homes and communities, living in a location close to family and enjoying activities that enhance social integration and involvement. PA 29 provides flexibility for homeowners to modify their homes to best meet the needs and to maximize the building without compromising on features that are best suited for their individual and unique situation and circumstances. So I direct you to the plan for preservation, conservation and development part one. And the three pages in particular that I reference talks about the survey that, that was conducted back then about what residents are looking for in the physical, economic and social development aspects. And part two has the chart on page 33 about what provides for a diverse housing portfolio. And I think ADUs fall into meeting those preferences by residents. Should the commission recommend and should the RTM vote to opt out of PA 29? As Abby stated, you're required on your records to state the reasons for such a decision and to publish that notice of your decision in a newspaper with substantial circulation no later than 15 days after that decision has been rendered. If that should occur, I would look for a clear explanation that describes your rationale and justification to deliberately limit and restrict residents from benefiting from a state law that other residents in other towns enjoy. And I would look for you to articulate the advantages and the benefits of opting out to residents and how your decision for opting out may better serve your, why it might not serve their needs as much as the commission's needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? I don't see any hands raised, have you?
I do not.
No, okay. Her second time, is there any other member of the public who would like to speak on item four, the public hearing on possible action to opt out of the provisions of PA 21-29 concerning accessory dwelling? Still no one. Okay, for the third and last time, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in this public hearing concerning opting out of the provisions of Public Act 21-29 concerning accessory dwellings? Okay, is there, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion to close the public hearing made by Karen.
I'll second it.
Okay. Ken seconded the motion to close the public hearing on opting out of the provisions of Public Act 21-29. All in favor or is there any discussion on it? No discussion? Joe?
No.
Karen? No. Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, four to nothing opting, I'm sorry, to close the public hearing on opting out of provisions of Public Act 21-29 concerning I'm sorry, concerning accessory dwellings. Let's move on to item number five. Application review, PL dash 21-16, request of John Hendel, Hendel's Route 85 Land LLC owner and applicant for site plan approval to locate a multifamily development at 969 Hartford Turnpike. C dash MF Zone in accordance with section 16, 18 and 22 of the zoning regulations. And as shown on plans entitled Waterford Multifamily Residential Development Apartment Community. Action was required by 224 and it's been extended to 41222. Abby, do you have anything to? Sam or Mark?
No, I believe the applicant team is here and I've made attorney Brance and Darren, I believe I've set everybody up who needs permissions to be co-host to share screens to, to do so.
Okay, who's like to start, Mr. Brance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Record, Mark Brance, B R A N S E of Helen, C. I'm representing the Hendel Route 85 Land LLC and the principal, which is John Hendel, who is with us this evening. And this is a proposal on 25.5 acres of land on Hartford Pike. 284 units in seven buildings with a community building or clubhouse facility. I'd like our engineer, David, Darren Overton from SLR to walk the commission through the site plans. We will then, the next person to speak will be Austin Rolthing, who will review what golf is, because this is the first project I've seen that has this golf course on it. And then Tim Wentz, our architect, will walk, walk through the art. And hopefully by the time we're done, you'll have a good feeling for what it is. So I would turn it over to Darren. Thank you, Darren.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Yes. As, as Mark said, my name is Darren Overton from SLR Consulting. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm going to go over some of the existing conditions first and then go over the proposed conditions for the project. I am going to share my screen here. Looks like I have the rights to do that. And everyone let me know when they can see the screen.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, great. So first up is an existing conditions kind of rendering of the site with an aerial background. The site is located at 969 Hartford Turnpike. It's 35.54 acres and it's in a commercial multifamily district. It's abutted to the north by open space, open land. And this green is actually a water course that runs down the hillside and crosses Hartford Turnpike. To the east, you can faintly see the outline of the power lines, but you can see the clearing for the power line easement that runs along the eastern property line. To the south and west, this is Hartford Road. We have cross street and we have some commercial and industrial type of development over on the south and west side of the property. And then on the west here is an existing gas station, I believe that was originally developed as, as part of this property and divided off. The existing property itself is, is undeveloped, as you can see here, it's mostly wooded. You do have some wetlands on the property, which are highlighted in green. So there's an outline of the wetlands here, bit of an upland area, kind of an island in the middle here. And then that water course over on the side and as part of the, we've gone through the inland wetlands commission and received a permit for the project. The kind of the purple or pinkish outline here is their recognized upland review area. The high point of the site is up in the northeast corner here, kind of up along the power lines. That's at an elevation of about 208. The site, for the most part, slopes in a southerly direction. There's a ridge here, there's actually two kind of north-south ridges, one here, which represents that high point that I mentioned. Then there's a valley in the, in the middle here, and then there's another ridge over here, kind of on the west side. All of, for the most part, this drains towards the wetlands here and goes through a cross culvert under Hartford Turnpike in this area. The low point on the site is right at that cross culvert inlet, which is about elevation 99. The wetlands, as you see them here on the site, were delineated by one of our soil scientists and field mapped as part of the survey. So with that, I'll move on to the, the proposed rendering. It's still zoomed out with the aerial background and we've kind of highlighted the, the major features on, on the site here. What's proposed for the use is a multifamily apartments. As Mark had mentioned, there's seven buildings that are kind of looped around this. They're kind of looped around this central parking area with one building in the middle here. Uh, there's two hundred and eighty-four dwelling units that are proposed, which are allowed under the zoning. We have parking spaced out and, and you know, around the circulation roads for the uh, for the site. Um, approximate to the buildings, we distributed the parking as evenly as we could to be convenient to each of the buildings. There's ultimate place here, four hundred and ninety-two total parking spaces are required. We've proposed five hundred and six on this plan. Um, you'll also see there's some smaller buildings here highlighted in brown. Those are actually garage spaces. Uh, we have sixty-eight total garage spaces and two of those garages are made wider to meet ADA requirements. Uh, and of the five hundred and six parking spaces that are proposed, we have nineteen that are ADA van accessible spaces. The site will be accessed by a, a new roadway, a boulevard-type roadway coming up off of Hartford Turnpike. The proposed curb cut is at the existing intersection with Crossroad where there's currently a signal. That signal will be modified as part of this project um, to accommodate the new intersection of the access drive. That access drive runs, it's about seven hundred and fifty feet uh, up the slope to access the distribution around the site to the apartments. The entire development here is served by public water and sewer and other utilities that will all be extended off of Hartford Turnpike. As part of the development, we have um, we analyzed the runoff change for the change in land cover. Obviously, when you develop a wooded parcel, you're gonna have a change in land cover and with the additional impervious, we're gonna have additional runoff. Um, we, we've done a complete hydrologic analysis of the site. And you can see these darker green areas are stormwater management basins that we've proposed. And then there's kind of some smaller um, basins here that are located around the site. These are basically a, a rain garden or bio-retention type basin. Uh, they're located between the buildings because the roof runoff from those buildings runs into those, has an opportunity to infiltrate uh, before it's then overflows into the drainage system that we've designed. You can see kind of in the light blue here, there's a pipe and catch basin collection system that then collects the runoff and brings it down to the series of stormwater basins that we've proposed. Ultimately with a discharge down here near the wetlands where these basins overflow to a plunge pool or level spreader type of outlet device which decreases velocity and prevents erosion at those outfall areas. So there's four, one, two, three, four of these bio-retention rain garden type structures. And then we have three main stormwater management basins. And then we also have another basin here which serves to treat runoff from the very end of the access drive, which couldn't be picked up by these basins and also actually serves to pick up some of the runoff coming off of Hartford Turnpike that comes into an existing grass swell and then it'll be routed through this water quality basin as well. Two of these basins are designed, according to the DEP Stormwater Manual, to be micro pool extended detention basins. And one of them, uh, we look at the size of the watersheds and how much water gets to these, one of them is designated as a pocket pond. Uh, we have hydrodynamic separators that will separate oils and floatables uh, and separate a majority of the sediment before they get into the stormwater basins. The stormwater basins also have four bays as a backup to collect any sediment and floatables that may get past those hydrodynamic separators. We also have in this area, it's not highlighted, but underneath the, the parking here is an underground stormwater detention and infiltration basin. These are open bottom type of chambers. Um, and that is actually located, if we go back to the existing aerial, that's actually located in this broad kind of valley here. What we found when we did some test pits on the site uh, as part of the stormwater management design, we find that, found that there were some pretty good sandy soils in there and the highest permeable soils were actually found in that area. We ran some permeability tests on samples we took as part of the test pits. And this is, it's not designed for infiltration. We didn't account for it in the stormwater management. But it's open bottom and we're allowing for infiltration um, into the underlying soils there. And then there's an overflow that controls the storage and then it goes into the collection system and then gets routed through the other stormwater basins. So we have a treatment train which includes catch basins with sumps. Um, some of the catch basins have four-foot sumps and hoods. We have this hydrodynamic separators, as I mentioned, sediment four bays, vegetated water quality basins, and then discharge the plunge pools and level spreaders. So with that, I'll move on to the sediment erosion control plan. I don't have a rendering for that, but there is a, a phase erosion control plan that was included with the uh, site plans that were submitted as part of the application. So phase one covers the entrance drive area here and development of these uh, initial stormwater basins here so that they can serve as sediment traps during construction. And the vegetation will be established early in the process before the majority of the site is developed so that that vegetation can really establish and cut down on, on erosion. Those, want those basins fully established early in the process. And then the second phase is shown as the upper part of the development up on the plateau here. There's approximately fifteen point eight acres of total disturbance, which triggers a deep stormwater general permit. That'll be required before construction begins. Um, we have perimeter controls using silk fence. There's inlet protection for all the catch basins proposed, temporary burns and swells that divert surface water to either a temporary sediment trap or one of the permanent basins. Um, the permanent basins are to be utilized for set or sediment management during construction. We have one additional sediment trap that's included in phase two that's temporary. And then erosion control brain blankets are provided wherever we have steep slopes that are proposed. And then the entrance drive, uh, one of the revisions we made was to add a reverse bench slope in the cut along the entrance drive. That northern slope along the entrance drive, we expect we're gonna get into some of the rock which we encountered in the test pits and you see as part of the cut along Route eighty. Um, that reverse bench ultimately may not be needed depending on how much rock is encountered, because you can go with a steeper slope there. Uh, if there's rock, but for now, we've graded it out to be two to one as if it were all soil with the reverse bench. So I'll just end by describing some of the amenities. The, the zoning regulations do require uh, a substantial amount of amenity space as part of the application of this type of development, multifamily development in the zone. Um, we do have the clubhouse, which is essentially located here um, for the residents. There's also a playground area um, that's included next to it. Um, then we have kind of some passive recreation type of amenities. There's some trails that lead up to this white boxed area here is actually a dog park. That's also proposed for use by the residents. And then these white kind of uh, gradient areas here represent um, what we've shown as disc golf holes. I actually enjoy playing disc golf and after walking the site and looking at how the, the wooded area is, is really a mature kind of forest and it's pretty open. Most of the uh, disc golf courses that I've played are in wooded areas where there's just underbrush that's cleared. So I felt like this space up here um, that was left wooded a, and not part of the development uh, would work out very well to set up a disc golf course where we just have minimal, minimal disturbance to set up some elevated wooded tees um, and then clear some underbrush and, and put up some of the nets at the end. Now, while I've played and I know quite a bit about um, disc golf, um, we actually have somebody here to present what disc golf would be, because many people don't know what it is. So Austin Rolthing would be our next presenter and he's gonna go over some further information to understand what disc golf is. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them at any time. Um, if not, like to have Ross, Austin go through his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, everybody for having me here. My name is Austin Rolthing. I am the uh, founder and president of Asian Roundnet, which specializes in promoting niche sports in the Asian region. Uh, disc golf being one of those sports. Um, appreciate you all having me here. Uh, so I will, uh, Mr. Chairman, do I have permission to share my screen?
Yes, I, I think you have the permission, right?
You did, you should.
Okay. Let's see.
Great. I see it. Does everyone else see it?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Okay, so, uh, so as Darren said, uh, he's proposing a disc golf course. So disc golf, uh, the best way to explain it, it's very similar to traditional golf. Almost identical in rules, only instead of using a uh, regular uh, golf club and golf ball, the players would be throwing discs or frisbees that look like this. So uh, and instead of holes, the players are trying to score in a basket, which I'll explain in the next slide. So here you can see uh, the basic uh, requirements for a disc golf course. So everything is in this slide. So you've got your disc golf net or the basket where the player is trying to throw the disc golf or the, the disc into the basket. And you have the tee on the bottom left here in the picture where the player would start. You have the sign that describes uh, the par of the course and the uh, route, suggested route and uh, features of the, of this particular hole. And then you, of course, you have your uh, your actual disc that you use to try to score into the basket. So yeah, the equipment itself, like I said, disc golf, there's many different kinds. They come in all different colors. Uh, so for example, this one is a driver. It has a, a sharper edge and made to be more aerodynamic and made for distance. Uh, this one is a putter, which is more um, got a, a broader rim meant to uh, be more accurate, but uh, for only short distances. So depending on the hole, a player will decide which uh, disc golf or which discs are to use uh, depending on the shot, the angle, um, and, and how far they needed to go. So like I said, same thing, the disc uh, or depending on the shot and on the uh, particular course. So the baskets, the baskets are just a simple um, metal frame into welded into the ground with these chains that uh, are meant to slow down the momentum of the disc so it can catch the disc and uh, fall into the basket. So the, the baskets would act as like the hole in uh, traditional golf. Um, they can be various heights and you can put them pretty much anywhere um, and, and in any terrain. Yeah, so you have two kinds of baskets. You have a mobile kind that you can just set up and, and you know, put up anywhere. Uh, made for more dynamic courses and you, uh, most disc golf, probably ninety percent of them are disc golf courses are uh, the one on the left here where it's actually um, into the ground and uh, permanent. So the tees uh, are, can be pretty much any, anything you want. I've seen tees that are just dirt mounds or just clearings. Um, some, some tees like the one on the right has, you know, actual pavement. Um, the more uh, the higher end ones on the left, for example, uh, have the, are paved and cleared and then have some kind of turf for grip so that the uh, player can get the best throw. Um, so this is where they would start. As you can see kind of on the right, there's a, a little bit of a path where the player is trying to uh, navigate his disc through uh, to get uh, to the, to the hole, to the basket. Alright, uh, every, every uh, hole starts with a, a tee sign. The tee sign just kind of explains the suggested flight pattern, although you don't need to follow that flight pattern. Um, it has the par, the distance, and uh, some are as simple as just, this is hole number one, this is hole number two, and some give a lot of detail, you know, as you can see in the ones, in the examples here that are pictured. Courses, so uh, the beautiful thing about uh, disc golf is that you can play it really anywhere. Uh, you can play in any terrain. So you know, like the one on the top left here is in an open field. Uh, the one in the bottom left is in a very heavily wooded area. Um, the only thing is if you're gonna be in a wooded area or more rocky terrain, um, typically the, the courses will have um, a path cut out just to kind of give the disc golfers um, an idea of the recommended route. Um, although they don't have to use that route, but it can really be played anywhere in any kinds of weather, um, in any terrain. So course standards, the typical uh, disc golf course is nine to eighteen holes. Um, I thi, I believe the one that Darren suggested me is seven holes. That's also okay, although that wouldn't be, you know, professional standard. Um, and typically holes are between three, four or five pars. Well, I have seen some up to six. Uh, but typically that's, that's the range. Fives are rare, sixes almost never happen. Um, and just like regular golf, uh, every time you throw the disc, you want to go to the spot where it landed, pick it up and then begin your nut, your second throw. Um, and the number of throws it takes you to actually land it into the basket is your final score for that hole, exactly the same as uh, traditional golf. So the typical uh, disc golf distance between tee and uh, and uh, basket is between uh, two hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty feet. Uh, obviously, the longer it is, the, usually the par will be higher. Um, you know, it really just depends on the uh, area constraints. So you know, that's the beauty of disc golf is that you can uh, really navigate it anywhere through any terrain and get really creative with some of the course designs. Um, some of the courses, you know, depending on uh, the amount of available space, we even share holes. So you know, for example, in this example, you could have hole seven and one or nine and eight, could technically, if they're close enough, could share a basket. So um, they could have different tees, but same ending points. Uh, so like I said before, it can be played anywhere. The only real requirement is that you have a tee and you have a basket and then players have uh, create enough space to make their throws. Um, but you don't want something with lots of brush where it's gonna get lost or you know, too much water where it might fall in, although those can be features of the course. Uh, but typically, a, a well-managed disc golf course will have some kind of uh, route or, or recommended um, way of going to each basket. And then just some of the basics of how it works is, you know, when you throw a disc, all, every disc has a different flight pattern. So um, this one, for example, is a driver. So this is meant to fly really far, but it will often turn. So um, because of the, the stability of the discs vary. Uh, drivers will go really very far depending on the driver and will turn, usually fade left. But depending on the throw, you can make it turn right. So there's all different kinds of techniques and throw is based on the, the discs. So yeah, so like I said before, the, the, it starts when the first player throws from the first tee. Then the second player would go, then the third player, and they, and then whoever's closest to the basket, or sorry, farthest from the basket would be the next to go um, in succession. So and then just continue like that, a very similar to traditional golf until you get it into the basket. And one thing I want to mention too, it's very important that the disc actually gets into the basket. It can, it cannot just hit it. It just hits it and bounces out. It does not count. Um, and that'd be a loss of a stroke. So it's important to hit those chains so that it sinks into the basket. Uh, scoring is, is exactly like golf, depending on uh, how many throws it takes you to get it into the basket uh, and how uh, high above par you are, how below par you are. They even use the same terminology. So we still have birdies, eagles, bogeys, double bogeys. Um, so if par is three, for example, and you take four throws, actually get it in a basket, that would be bogey. And your resulting score for that hole will be plus one. And then at the end of the course, uh, however many points you are over or under par, uh, will be your, your final score. Yeah, so this is an example of some different throws. So uh, the guy on the left, he's doing what's called a forearm throw. So he's throwing the disc. He's putting his fingers like this and throwing the disc like this. And the met, the purpose of that is so that the disc actually flies right because the, the spin of the disc will be right. Uh, the, the guy on the right is throwing uh, a traditional style, like you might throw a frisbee with, you know, with your friends or something, and that will typically fade left. Uh, both of them are starting from the tees, so both of them are throwing with their drivers. And yeah, uh, so this is a, a visual demonstration of the different flight patterns. Uh, so on the far left, even though somebody might have thrown straight at the tree because of, they might know and understand the flight pattern of their, their desk. They can see that it'll turn around the tree and, and end up where they would like it. So um, navigating around terrain is part of the fun and why this golf is, is really great to be played anywhere. And the more unique the course, the more unique the pa, the flight patterns, the flight paths, uh, the more fun it typically is and it stays very fresh. Okay, physical requirements, uh, anybody can play. I've seen people as old as, you know, seventies, eighties playing. Um, and even with drivers, it's, doesn't take a lot of force, it's a lot of technique. So um, any, pretty much anybody can play as long as they're able to throw a disc. Uh, and popularity, it's, it's been exploding. It's one of the fastest growing sports uh, in America, actually. They just had their um, national championships uh, uh, not too long ago. Um, there's a big upset and everything. It was really great, but uh, it's, it's, it's really, really rapidly growing. You could, if you go to one of these websites, you can see a lot of the streaming and a lot of the professional tours. Um, you know, there's some guys like uh, uh, one of the guys pictured here, he's making, you know, almost ten million dollars, uh, just to play disc golf. So it's, it's pretty serious, um, becoming a pretty serious sport. And the fan base, yeah, has same similar things. There's over a hundred million views on YouTube. So, uh, just another testament to the growing popularity of the sport. Yeah, and there's, there's, the disc golf courses from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one almost doubled. Um, just to kind of show you how fast it's really growing and, and all over America and not just America. I specialize in the Asian region. We're rapidly growing in Asia as well. So it's, it's becoming a worldwide sport and, uh, something I really hope that you guys are able to implement into your plan. So that's it for me. That's, uh, my presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Darren, and thank you, uh, Kenny Brants for, uh, giving me this time to speak.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Awesome. I thought the commission would, would enjoy seeing a little bit more of that just because, uh, the, uh, it is sort of a, a, a nicely wooded area and would be a nice amenity for the facility. I would now turn over to Tim Wentz, uh, who is our architect, who will walk you through the architectural plans. I'm going to stop sharing this screen so that he can do his share screen. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Tim Wentz. I am the founding partner of Gate Seventeen Architecture. Uh, we specialize in apartment projects as far south as Florida, as far north as Maine. I probably have, uh, six or seven communities already, uh, up and down the eastern seaboard of Connecticut right now. Um, I want to share my slide presentation, although it doesn't appear that I'm allowed to share it.
You should be. You're a co-host, so you should be able to share.
Okay, let's see, share screen. Okay. Um, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, fine. This is an aerial rendering of the project and you can see the main entrance over here on the right hand side. It's actually going uphill into the complex itself. And we have seven buildings, uh, that are the residential apartments. This first building, which we refer to as Building One Thousand, is a four-story building in the front and a three-story building in the back because it is, the, the ground is going uphill and that building has forty-four units. The next building, which is this one right here, is the same as building number one thousand. This is number two thousand. Uh, it's only has thirty-seven units in it and it's the same configuration where we have four stories in the front and three stories in the back. We then go to building three thousand, which is this one in the middle. And this is a four-story building, uh, what we call slab on grade, meaning it's perfectly flat on the first floor. And then we have four stories of apartments. Building five thousand over here, uh, is again similar to three thousand, but, uh, four thousand has forty-four units. And this building here, which is five thousand, is identical to four thousand and it too has forty-four units. Swinging over here to the bottom of the site, this one is a, this is six thousand and it is three stories on the parking lot side and four stories in the back because the ground is sloping away from the parking lot. We call this lowest level, uh, the garden level. And then finally in building seven thousand, which is thirty-two units, it is similar to six thousand in that it is three stories in the front and four stories in the back. Now you can see here in the middle, we have a one-story clubhouse with the amenity space of the pool and a children's lot located in this location. Now, one of the things that we wanted to do, because we have seven buildings, is to give each one a unique look uh, in terms of the roof line and in terms of the colors and then in terms of the ins and outs of the building. So no two buildings are similar in look, yet they're all similar in style. Uh, it's what we refer to as a New England, uh, architecture. We have the typical sloped roofs and we have gable, uh, roofs and we have hip roofs. Now this next slide is a two D version of it. Uh, one of the things I do want to point out is that building one thousand, we've incorporated a mail center in this corner right here. Uh, the mail center is a place where people can congregate, pick up their mail. It also will include a package area where all the bail and all the packages for the whole complex will be delivered. And they will have access to this room, uh, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And then on building two thousand, in this corner right here, we incorporated the maintenance building. And it will have a garage door on the side where they had their golf cart that will come out onto the parking lot and service the entire project. You can also see scattered around the site are the garages. These are individual garages that would be rented out to, uh, the residences. And we have a collective trash area here. Uh, we do that because we don't want dumpsters scattered around the site because the collection becomes very noisy. Uh, this gives us the opportunity to put a compactor in there and, uh, we can do recycling at that point also. This is the primary elevation of building one thousand. Uh, you can see that it is a, uh, New England architecture. We have hip roofs on the ends. We have gables in the, uh, off of each se- uh, side. We have a mix of materials. Uh, in this case, what we're using is a shingled style, uh, vinyl. And that's also in this top area here and here and here. And then the other primary material is, uh, a vinyl, uh, siding. And what we do is we, uh, do different colors too. Because what we want to do is we want to take the mass of the building and we want to break it up. And we do that by changing materials, by alternating colors, by having a large amount of fenestration, uh, by varying the roof line, by varying the ins and outs of the building. So we're not building just a box. We're adding a lot of visual interest to the building itself. Uh, what you're seeing also is that each unit has its own private balcony. The main entrance is located right here in the center. Now, the back of the building, as I said, the building one thousand, we are four stories in the front and three stories in the back. But what it's important for you to understand is that not only are we doing the same cues as the front of the building in terms of varying, uh, what will be colors and also materials, but also the roof lines. We have double gable ends here. We've got dormers in the back. Uh, we don't Hollywood front these buildings where we simply have, uh, a good-looking facade in the front and then we strip all the features off it on the sides and the back. We carry everything all the way around the building. Now on the sides, this will give you the idea of what we're doing. This center section here, this is the left and right elevation, but this is where the front of the building is. So you can see it's four stories. As the ground slopes up, it becomes three stories in the back. And again, you can see the sides, we're doing the same thing as the front and rear in that we are varying the elevations. Uh, it's also important to note that we have, uh, very large windows because we feel it's very important, uh, that you get as much light as possible into these units. And, uh, it's proven to be very, very successful. Um, our communities in, uh, Old Saybrook and East Lime and Waterford have been, uh, extremely popular. Most of them have waiting periods to get into their units. Now here's the typical floor plan. As you can see, uh, this level at the first floor uh, in the front of the building is where we have the mail center, which is off to the right here. The main entrance lobby is here. And what I hadn't mentioned prior is that each one of these buildings is an elevator building. And because they're an elevator building, every single unit in every building, uh, is a handicap accessible unit. The second th- through fourth floors are, uh, again, their car, what we call corridor buildings. They have the elevator and you access your individual units through the corridor area and you've got your two means of exit for your stairs. This is building two thousand. It's, uh, again, the same style and same, uh, size as the building one thousand, although it does only have thirty-seven units instead of forty-four. But now what we've done is we vary the architecture of the, uh, building from the first building. Uh, although what we're doing is we're keeping somewhat the same materials and colors so that even though each building is different than the previous building, it will all have a common theme that ties it together. Rear elevation, again, this is a four-story in the back or in the front and three-story in the back. Uh, you can see we're varying the roof line. It is different from the front. And of course the sides, again, the center section is the front and it slopes up to the back. Uh, you can see right here that this is the garage door for the maintenance area. And in the next slide, you can see that where the mail area was on building one thousand on two thousand, the maintenance area is on the back and it would have its own entrance. And of course, there's a garage door located right here and this is the lobby area. And then we go into our typical second, third or fourth floor. And again, uh, it's very similar layout with the apartments, the corridor, the single elevator and the two stairs. This is the smallest of the buildings. It is building three thousand. I say it's the smallest because it's smallest in sizes, even though it too has forty-four units. But once again, we're varying the front elevation and the architecture, uh, but keeping the same common themes with the materials and deciding, this is our front entrance area. These are the exits for the two stairs. And of course, this is four floors in the front and four floors in the back. The sides, as you can see, it's just a straight slab on grade. It's a basically a flat elevation. And the floor plan, and this is the lobby area entrance. Again, this is a corridor building. And this particular unit, uh, building has mostly, uh, one-bedroom units and one-bedroom den units. This is building four thousand and five thousand. These were the two buildings which were to the left on my site plan. Uh, again, you know, recreating a slightly different elevation, but you look at it and you say, this is all part of the same complex. Uh, I can tell that because it's the same materials, the same colors. But gosh, every building is different. And this too is a four-story slab on grade. This is the rear elevation and the side elevations. The floor plans, we typically will put our two bedrooms, our larger units on the ends. And then the center areas will have our one bedrooms and our two bedrooms. Again, for all elevator buildings, they're all handicap units. Now this is building six. Uh, this one is the opposite of buildings one and two because as, uh, Darren had said, the, the grade is sloping downwards. So this is the high side of the grade. The low side is in the back. So I'm three stories in the front, I'm four stories in the back. And that's my back elevation and my side elevations. Floor plans. And then we go finally to building seven thousand. Uh, again, this is a three-story building in the front and a four-story building in the back. The rear elevation and the side elevations. This is the front of the building right here. And in the back is where it's the four stories. Now, the units are studios and one-bedroom units, which you see here. Again, what you are looking at is that each unit has its own private deck. Each unit has a gourmet kitchen with granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. The bedrooms ha- for the most part have large walk-in closets. Each unit provides an individual washer dryer, a generous bath. And outside is our mechanical systems. Each unit is completely s- uh, separate in its utilities from any other unit. You get your own electric bill, your own gas bill, your own water bill. Uh, you, and so your utilities are tailored just to your apartment. So if your neighbor wants it to be a hundred degrees and he's burning gas at, you know, a tremendous rate, you, you turn your thermostat all the way down because his apartment's heating your apartment. You're only paying for your apartment's utilities. And then these are the, uh, one-bedroom dens. Uh, we actually have three configurations. The smallest is this one right here. And then when we get into a slightly larger one, we were able to put some closets in it. And then finally, we have one with an interior den. Uh, some, some people will make this a dining room. Other people will make it a den. And our two-bedroom units, uh, our interior two-bedroom unit, uh, we have, uh, we always split the bedroom so that if you have a person you are sharing the apartment with, uh, you're trying to create, uh, some separation between the two units. So traditionally what you're doing is here, you've got the living room in the middle, master bedroom on one side. And, excuse me, the primary bedroom on one side and bedroom number two on the opposite side. And in this configuration, because it's an end unit, we're separating them from a walk, but with a big walk-in closet. So, uh, we try and keep the sound distance, uh, for the units to maintain as quiet an apartment as we can. And then we have our bigger units. This one is a, the smaller of the two-bedroom or the three-bedroom units. And this one is the larger of the three-bedroom units. And in each case, what we do is we separate the master bedroom. And typically we would put the second and third bedroom here. In this particular case, the second bedrooms here and the third bedrooms over here. And now the clubhouse. The clubhouse is, uh, sixty-five hundred square feet. Again, uh, what we're doing is we're using the same materials. Uh, we're changing it up for a slightly different palette. Uh, and we're also providing stone in this area because we want to dress this up because this really is the hub of the community. In the floor plan, the main entrance is located in this area right here. And this large room has a see-through fireplace so that you have a cafe area here that can enjoy the fireplace. And then you have a sitting, living room area right- And then you have a sitting living room area right here that can enjoy the fireplace. And then the upper corner is where we have gaming. Uh typically, we put in a foosball, we put in a shuffleboard and we put in a pool table. And then we would have double doors leading to the outside where we would have an outdoor deck. Uh now, as you come into this rotunda area, uh again, to the left would be your community space. To the right here is the hub of the uh leasing and business portion of the site. Uh where we'd have a leasing room, we will have a office. And we have a conference room. And we always put that on an outside corridor because the conference rooms become very popular and that people actually want to reserve them so that they can use them for business. Uh as everyone is aware, the number of home offices is increasing rapidly. Uh and so what we're starting to see and what we are doing is we're putting in what we call business centers which have multiple desks in them where someone could come in with their laptop. Uh they can sit down and they can work in that area and they would be, they would share a common printer. Uh because a lot of people, yes, they work at home, but they don't want to necessarily sit in their apartment all day long while they work. So the business centers are becoming very, very popular. And then in the back here, and this all flows out to the pool, which is down here. We have a large workout room and then we have a fitness in demand room. And here we have the ancillary spaces for the pool area. We have the uh the bathroom shower complex. We have a dog wash because that's a very popular amenity. And of course, we have our pool equipment. And finally, the garages. Now, you know, these garages are fairly long. Uh but what we do is we break up the roof line by putting gables in. Uh each garage is individual. Uh they are completely separate from the neighboring garage. They're actually separated by a one hour partition. Uh and then what we do in the back is we put in not only the gables, but we put in trellis. And the trellis gives the landscape architect the opportunity to have plants that will grow up onto the building and break up the length of the elevation. And then finally, our entry monument, which is really just a simple stone base with a blue stone cap. And then we have a uh simple sign with the name of the project and uh the height of that is to be determined. Are there any questions?
I do, I do have a question for you. The paper I have says Waterford Village. And it's stamped December twentieth twenty-one. Is there any changes in the one that you just showed us?
When you say the paper, or what uh what are you talking about?
I I have.
Were they plans?
I have the site plan, building one, building two, building four. It looks similar to what you just went through with us.
Right.
But it labeled Waterford Village on the front.
Right, because we originally called the project Waterford Village, but then found that there was another Waterford Village in the town, so we changed the name to Waterford Heights.
Okay, are there any other changes in in what you went through and what we have in front of us?
Uh Mister Chairman, if I may, for the record, Mark Brants. The architecture should be the same. Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but with regard to the site plan. Uh we did get a round of of staff comments. We also got comments from Commissioner uh uh Petrini, is that correct? Um and so adjustments were made in the site plan. Um and Darren can respond to those if if you want to go deeper into that. But the um, for example, the garage units were pulled back to improve sightline. So that didn't, that didn't affect the architecture, but it did affect the site plan. So the plans that you say that you have should should say Waterford Heights, I believe, and maybe uh town staff can can clarify that also as to what what the commission members should have.
Yeah, um. For the record here, uh we had um, the applicant had submitted revised plans uh to us, site plans. Uh we received on February sixteenth. Uh those sets of plans were distributed out to the uh commission. Um along with the comments, uh the um response to comments as well.
I had a question for the architect.
Yes.
So um I was, one of the comments that I had was regarding building height. And I think the engineer put together a calculation based on our regulation of ten feet outside of the the average grade, ten feet around the perimeter of the the building halfway up the the roof line on the gable ends. Now, I I see the calculations, um not exactly sure about the average grade. It doesn't show which numbers in the site, little site plan. But the buildings that I'm concerned about the height, because the maximum height in the zone is fifty-five feet. And it's buildings three, four and five, the four story buildings. And I'd really like to see or, you know, understand where that mean height is on the on the facade of the building, you know, the the mean height of that based on, because these are all slab on grade as you stated. And it, you know, the average, the building height from the plans that I have shows seventy feet to the the peak of the roof to the um you know, to the slab on grade. So it it looks to me like the 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 structures, although the the thing we got on the twenty-third, we received on the twenty-third shows the height, but it doesn't show in relation to the actual buildings. It just gives a building height.
Well, yeah, what we do is we take the four corners, the elevation of the four corners. And then uh that would establish the average grade around the building. Uh typically, it's in the middle of the sides of the building on a building that slopes up or down. And as you pointed out, uh the the buildings uh that are slab on grade. Uh they are no taller than the buildings, for instance, one thousand and two thousand. Because there, even though the average parade is making the buildings slightly uh shorter, the fronts are the same uh height as the buildings which are slab on grade.
No, I understood. I guess uh what I'm, what I'm missing is on the actual architectural plans where that mean height is in the roof, in the roof line. That that's going to determine the fifty-five feet elevation maximum.
Right. Well, what we can do is we can uh submit to you an exhibit which actually labels each one of the buildings with the mean height to the mean of the roof. So you can actually see that uh on each building elevation.
Yeah, that 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 would be very helpful.
Hey, can I just, I just want to just clarify backwards, Ken, for a second. On the eleven by seventeen exhibit that we have, that said Waterford Village and now is Waterford Heights. Other than the site plan of which is amended by the February sixteenth big set of plans, is there anything else that differs in this eleven by seventeen exhibit?
Other than the night, the the name and the 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 front cover where it shows the perspective view versus the site plan view. And I think the second page on here was the site plan view as well, but no, I I substantially, I don't think the floor plans or yeah, that we have that one right there. We have the site plan view. We just didn't have perspective view. Um but everything else, you know, obviously, we had, they made some adjustments to the garages as we stated and some, some of the sightlines for the um parking, parking areas as well. But um, no, I mean, my only concern is just, just.
Okay, but I, wait a minute, I just want to ask the applicant, is there any other changes to it?
Uh for the record, Mark Brants, um we we incorporated comments from the Architecture Review Board. So for example, there are crosswalks were added. There was this uh an area of sidewalk added. It connected the mailroom with the uh parking lot for the trash area. It's pretty it's minor things, but things that we we did get some, some very good comments from Architecture Review. And also, again, in in response to Commissioner Petrini, um the the garage removed and and some other adjustments were made. I don't care. I want to elaborate on that. But um it's not something that it's going to be readily visible. I know another thing that we changed was we had dimensions on the sign. The entry, the monument sign at the entrance. Um but um we understood from town staff that it's sign regulations have been recently revised, so we took the dimensions off. So it's going to look like that, but how tall it is and what square footage it is will will be at the at the permitting uh stage. It it's things like like that. We just, as we've gotten comments uh from Architecture Review Board or from commission members, we've incorporated them into those plans. Um the other thing I would just mention is um just for it um uh Mister Wentz discussed the the layout of the various floor plans. Fifty-five percent of the units are studio or one bedroom. Thirty-six percent are two bedroom. And nine percent are three bedroom. So to give you some idea of of the distribution. So over half are studio or one bedroom. Um but uh there are some two bedroom and 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 a few three bedroom units in that, if that's helpful to the commission.
Okay, right, I think we should get the um this exhibit to the commission as as amended though, just so we have a complete package in front of us. This, I I only have the old one.
Yeah, definitely.
Like to have the new one.
And if I could just add, Greg, is that in the new one, if we could show the elevator, the the mean height of the elevation, the elevations of all the buildings and it meets the the building height requirement in this or the zone.
Well, we 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 thought they provided that, but we can certainly show it more graphically if that's easier. Um easier to grasp. The other thing I would just say is your measurement of 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 building height says it has, can be measured at no more than ten feet from the building perimeter. That's the maximum. Uh and Darren, I think Darren used five feet is just is a in halfway in between, but that's, it's it's interesting. Your 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 definition doesn't give you a precise point, no more than ten feet. So with that, we 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 didn't go more than ten feet.
Yeah, I'm 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 looking just for the elevation. I want to see from the average grade where it meets and making sure it ma- meets the fifty-five foot requirement.
Certainly, certainly. Now, Mister Chairman, I did submit to the commission a statement of design compatibility with some photographs of older buildings in the area. Uh I'm, you should have that in the record. All of you should have that. That was part of our original submission. Um I can review it if you wish, but I don't, un- unless you're interested in having being walked through it. I wasn't planning to do that.
No, it's guy, I I I've looked at it. Has anyone else, has everyone else looked at it? And and if there's no question, Mr. Brant, so it's just, we don't need the presentation if we have it all. I just want to make sure.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Just want to make sure everybody didn't look at it. This, it's it's the one with pictures of uh buildings in the crossroad area.
Correct. Yeah, I I specifically used ones in this immediate area. I didn't, I felt every part of Waterford has its own character and I wanted to use what was right here.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on it? Uh and I can't see the average because. Okay, Karen?
Uh a couple of questions, actually. Um you mentioned that the mailroom is there in building one thousand. Will there be specific parking for the mailroom, like a short term parking area, or will it just be do your best to get as close as you can when you can?
It it has its own parking. Uh go ahead. Darren, would that be on your site plan? There we go.
There we go. So the mailroom is here. And there's parking here that's designated to be used for both the mailroom and for the the trash area. Um part of the Architecture Review Board, we did add a crosswalk in here and a sidewalk connection from this parking to the mailroom.
Okay, so that's something we're not seeing on this particular drawing, but it is included in future.
We we snuck it in after Mark, or uh sorry, after Tim did his rendering.
Okay, and then um just to kind of bounce around here, the disc golf that you went through. Is that something that you're expecting will only be for your residents? Or are you expecting that other people might come and use the course that don't live on the property?
That is residence only. For the record, Mark Brants, that is residence only. It it, we don't have parking, public parking for it. It's it's not set up for that. It's your your regulations require a certain percentage of recreation, of active recreation space, not just open space, but recreation. Um and so this isn't to meet that goal, but it is not intended as a separate commercial operation. It is an amenity for the residents only.
Sure, I understand that. I um I guess I'm just wondering is if your disc golf course becomes very popular and people start telling their friends about it. Um are your parking spaces assigned? Are they open to everybody, you know, or are they labeled as guest and resident in order to kind of mitigate people coming in to use your golf course?
You know, I I don't know whether we'll have assigned assigned spaces or not. Um but notice that in order to reach the disc golf course, you would, you have to walk to the rear of the buildings. It's not like you just pull up and pile out. So it's not going to be very easy for for non-residents to do that. But it it and and certainly we can post it, just, it's just like with the pool. It's not a public.
Sure.
But we, you know, I guess, you know, we we wouldn't want people coming in to go swimming i- in our pool because it's not a, you know, a public facility. Um we certainly could post that with signage to to assure that too.
I I was just curious um what the accessibility might be for shall we say, uh the word gets out and people find out like, oh, it's really cool. I want to go check that out, you know. If the parking spaces aren't necessarily labeled in that area, they might say like, oh, I can mark here and I'll just walk through and.
Yeah, I see the the parking, the parking, because because the building, because the course is on the far side of the buildings. It's not going to be that easy for somebody to just stroll by. And on the um uh get my ordinance, I I guess is on the uh easterly side. You have that uh high tension power line easement. It's quite wide and inhospitable. So I don't think many people are going to go sneaking under the power line. We'd have to walk a couple hundred feet through the woods, you know, to reach this. So I I I think we have some good uh buffering through that that power line easement. And and it's, and it's, that power line is is rugged.
Okay, um and then your parking lot, everything is two-way traffic, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and are any of the units considered affordable?
That we're, we're not, no. They're, these are all market.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
I did have a, just a quick question. I know the trash was located in a, in a central or somewhat central area. How how are you, how does that work? Like, how are people going to take their trash bags or is there compacters and then it's going to get transported from the building for maintenance or?
Well, I I ironically, what you will see is people will take their trash. They put it on the hood or the roof or of the trunk of their car and they drive it over to the compactor and deposit it. Uh this is typical of almost every apartment complex we have. We don't like to scatter dumpsters around the site because of the OSHA noise beeping that you get when the trucks are backing up and they traditionally come in early morning to take care of the trash. And you, the residents just do not like the noise, so they would much rather have a central location.
Okay, I I that's the way it works. It just seems kind of, kind of strange from from a, I guess, the older style uh developments.
I would just add for the Greg and Mark Brants, um Tim indicated uh the design he did in Old Saybrook. That's the one by the train station, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, um if any of you are headed down to Old Saybrook, um this is a a developer's approved just a few years ago. I'm councilor and I I did review that project as it was coming in. Um and it 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 has this clubhouse, the fireplace, the mailroom. There's a lot of the features that you see here. And it is just gorgeous. It is really, the town has been very, very pleased with it. Um and uh like I say, if you're, if you're passing through Old Saybrook, it's uh it's worth the detour to take a look at it. It's quite, quite, again, you see that the the balconies, porches, a lot of the features you see in this design are incorporated there. And uh it it worked, it works beautiful, functions very, very well.
Okay, Mister Retsch, do you have any more presentation or anyone, or or should we just get into any other question?
That 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 completes our formal presentation unless any, any, any one on our team had anything to add that they we haven't covered.
Okay.
Uh that's it. Yes, we're open for any thoughts or questions.
Okay. So Karen, do you have, were those all of your questions that you asked?
Yeah, I think I'm good for now. I think they they addressed the the intersection and the comments that we got the other day, so I'm good.
Ken, you have anything?
Actually, I have a lot of questions.
Okay, Ken, all right, so hold on, hold on one second then. Joe, you have any questions?
I'm good.
All right, Joe's good. Ken, before you go, let me just say one thing. If we can get the updated the exhibit that's eleven by seventeen for me, that would help me out just to make sure that I have the complete package in front of me, and I don't have any other questions. So Ken, is that is that is that okay, Mr. Brant, if you could submit that, please?
Certainly, certainly.
And then, Ken?
I thought we did, but maybe they just didn't get out in time, but we'll make we'll coordinate and make sure that you have everything.
What is what's being shown is slightly different from what was submitted and passed out to the commission?
I see.
So if we can just get what was being shown, that would be great. Thank you. And Ken, any questions for you, from you?
I I have I have one here based on some of the responses to the comments that were given. I'm just going to kind of go through one by one. I just wanted to start with the the next one, which was being the snow shelf. And to review, just reviewing the snow shelf plan that was submitted back on February, February ten, I think it was. All concerns, you know, just showing showing a lot of unrealistic areas for snow. Specifically, it's showing thirty-two spaces covered up by snow in the central area of the parking lot. And if that's the case, then you're 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 not meeting your parking requirements at that point, because now you now you're you're missing. I think you said that the parking was required. It's four ninety-two. Proposed is five oh six minus some of the other, you know, handicap and other things like that. You you're going to be well below the required parking spaces. And again, I guess the 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 snow or the the snow shelf plan, like some of it showing it beyond, like, I don't know how you even do it, putting it beyond the sidewalks. There's really nowhere to pile the snow. I mean, there are some areas on site. But in general, I don't I don't see how that really works.
For the record, Mark Brans, I'm going to let Darren Overton review this, the snow plan with you, but I do want to make one correction concerning parking. At the time that we filed this application, there were five hundred and six spaces proposed in four hundred and ninety required. But your regulations have been changed since we've since we initially filed. You now only require four hundred and ten spaces in this zone for for multifamily. And we are opting in. We can't be compelled to comply with this zoning amendment, but we can and are opting in. We can opt in. So are the parking requirement now is only four hundred and ten spaces, and that's one of the reasons why in looking at our snow shelf plant or snow storage plant, we felt comfortable occupying some parking spaces with snow because we're now over your well over the parking that you require. We didn't want to take it out, and so it's good to have it available. But there's that. And then Darren, I would ask you to share the snow plan response in terms of the realistic, how realistic the the areas are.
I think you may be muted if you're speaking.
Yeah, when I shared the screen, I lost where the mute button was. Sorry about that. So can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
So the areas in red are the areas we looked at for snow storage. And the reason why we show these across the sidewalk is that the sidewalk, it's it's a contiguous curb and sidewalk. So we expect that the snow is going to be pushed off to the side of the roadway itself, and then it needs to be cleared off of the sidewalks as well. So there should be an opportunity to move that across the walks and store in these lawn areas in in front of the building. I mean, typically, you're going to push the snow to the side. Where there's entrances to buildings and sidewalks, that needs to be cleared. And particularly along the roadway here, we expected that the snow was just going to be pushed to the side like we show on the on the second plan here. So I I thought what we were showing was realistic, and and as Mark said, we did show the central areas that were probably the most remote spaces in the middle that those might be utilized during the winter for snow storage, recognizing that we we have more parking than is necessary under the current regs. And at at some point, there may be a modification submitted to adjust the the parking count. So we did show them around the perimeter here. You know, the bottom line, we we've all lived in New England, I'm sure most of you for many years. Many years like we've had this year that we don't get a lot of snow. In in years that we do get heavy snows and cold temperatures for a long period of time. The fact of the matter is the snow is just going to have to be moved with bucket loaders to other areas of the site or even trucked off of the site in some of those situations. But this is what we what we see as reasonable storage areas that can accommodate, you know, the majority of of seasons that we have, winter seasons in New England.
Okay, I mean, is that something you can add a note to the plan, just, you know, stating, you know, you know, stuff will be removed as required or something like that with bucket loaders is needed or or something, just in case. You know, because you don't want the residents to, you know, be stuck in there and and things of that sort. So just anything to make sure that it be adequately adequately taken care of.
Yeah, sure, we can do that.
So the other, just I'm just curious, I mean, the the regulation where you attorney Branson, you said it was there's four hundred and one required.
Yes.
Because right here, we have one point five for one fifty-two and then two at one thirty-two. But what was the change? What are the changes that are made to the four-ten? How did you guys come up with that number?
I'll have to defer to Darren on that. I know that, like I say, we were four ninety and the when the regulation changed, it went to four-ten. I don't know if town staff can help with that, too. I just I know that it dropped. We're we're your regulation was just over parking with too much paved surface.
Right, and 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 goes by unit type. And so I think the question is whether the parking calculation chart was updated to reflect the current mix of uses or sorry, units with the new parking standard.
Right, right.
I don't think we have that.
That had not been updated on the site plan.
Right, so our calculation recognized the relation at the time we submitted this. And that is still represented on the title sheet that you see here.
And on the revised, correct, on the even on the revised set that was that was submitted, you're still showing four hundred and ninety-two required spaces. And that was based on the old the old parking calculation, regulation.
I guess if you can just update the plan as well as the building height as well with the revised counts with. So, okay, that that's it there. On the on the main entrance, I I know you guys had mentioned that you you did the you know, because it was graded at two to one over fifteen feet based on the the soil and erosion guidelines, you guys put the reverse bench in there. You are anticipating rock. I've driven by the site. You can see the ledge coming out. Is there any problem with adding a typical detail showing the ledge cut that's anticipated?
So we would show a kind of slope detail of the option going like a one to eight rock cut or something like that?
Correct. Yeah, just just to show that just because that it saves you if you have to, then you don't have to come back to us and it's authority and staff can take care of it from there. But if you have, you could add that detail. So I guess my main concerns are with some of the drainage. Specifically, there's no emergency spillways on the the to the top detention basin and the and the main big one in between. So I don't know what number that detention basin is there at the top, the but there's there's no emergency spillway. And I I've just, I was curious if the the storm, or first question is, how many acres are draining to these detention basins total?
Uh, that's a good question. I'd have to look in a stormwater report.
And the reason I ask that question is because in the erosion guidelines as well, chapter nine, it talks about just the spillway design and having the requirement for the emergency spillway. It does say that anything over twenty acres requires one. But if by site constraints, it can't be done, that the hundred-year storm can be routed through the system. And I'm just on that upper one, I I would, I'm I'm really concerned that there's no way you're going to get a hundred-year storm through that spill, through that emergency overflow on top. You know, plus with all the other, the storm water in in the system at that point as well. I I just I find it kind of, I I just would love to see the calculations there as well as the the grate that's shown in that for detention, or at least the one that's shown there for detention one-ten, that grate seems awful fine for an overflow grate. Now, I don't know that it's necessary to be, I mean, it's that that looks tighter than a catch base, and then we know catch basins, you know, in storms, you know, with leaves and stuff like that can clog pretty pretty readily.
So if if I could just explain the design here, typically, we do typically use, what is a riprap emergency overflow spillway like you see in the erosion control manual, and that's typically done where we have a berm that's constructed on the low side of a basin where basin's partially excavated into a hillside and then a berm on the low side. That basin up near the clubhouse is fully excavated with the road around it, so there really is no berm. And the reason why you put that riprap emergency spillway in there is one, to allow a large storm to pass. If your outlets structure blocks, it's blocked up by debris. But it's it's also to prevent erosion of that berm and failure of the basin where the entire detained volume could release very quickly and cause a lot of downstream hazard. So in in this situation, we don't have an earthen berm that could erode. And the way we design these outlet structures is actually the hundred-year storm passes through all of either the orifice or the V-notch weir. So the hundred-year storm does not actually get above the V-notch weir here. So this structure actually has this entire eight-inch opening around all four sides of it that acts as an emergency spillway. If any of these orifices get clogged, the storm can overflow through here, and that's the emergency spillway. So it doesn't even go through the grate. If somehow this all got blocked up, these eight-inch openings, then it could actually spill through the grate on top. So this this design we've used, I mean, I've worked at Mylona McBroom and SLR for thirty years, and and these structures have been designed in our our basins for over thirty years, and we haven't had any problems with failures of these openings, these emergency weirs or the grates being blocked. We do, I will admit, when we have earthen berms on the low side, we normally do put in riprap overflows. But in this particular situation, it doesn't warrant them. And so this would be the emergency overflow here. So that's kind of the design premise, and I just wanted to make it clear that the hundred-year storm does not even overtop and go into this eight-inch opening. It all goes through the V-notch weir and the orifice for all of these. And we have various configurations of the V-notches, or here's actually a square notch for this basin. And what what also happens here is is the water surface elevation. We want to make sure the high point in our basin, there's actually a foot of freeboard in the basin. So the water can't overtop any of the berm or the perimeter of the basin without the opportunity of going through either this eight-inch weir or through the top. So we have one foot of freeboard above the maximum hundred-year water surface elevation, any of these basins.
Well, now, you say a foot of, now, where do you get the foot? Because I just see ten inches. Or are you going from the overflow elevation?
So the the top of the the earth around the structure is actually above the top of the grate.
Yep.
So let's see, we have top of burn elevation in here of one twenty-four. And that overflow elevation is one twenty-two and a half. So actually, this one, there's probably a little bit more than a foot of freeboard in there.
Okay.
And the hundred-year water elevation is one twenty-three.
No. That 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 detention basin is, that's my the least of, well, least of my concern. It's really, I think it's I think it's the one twenty and one-ten. You know, I I think the one-twenty has got the similar, it's a completely excavated basin, as you stated. But is there any, are the calculations done to show the full hundred-year storm being routed through the outlet structure?
Yes.
Okay, so the full hundred-year storm can go through that that outlet structure as designed?
Yes.
So then that leads me to the the last one, then, is the one that I guess the number one-ten. So just quick calculations, I looked at test bit three and test bit two. The the groundwater elevations or seasonal groundwater elevations, whatever they may be. It it looks like that by my calculations. Simple math, if I can find the So based on like test bit three, you you said the seasonal high groundwater is at seven feet. So if you subtract seven feet from the elevation of approximate where the test hole is, one twenty-nine puts you at one twenty-two. And if you do test bit two, you have an elevation on the ground, one twenty-five seasonal high groundwater or groundwater, I'm not sure which it was, was at six feet. And that puts you at one nineteen for a of a water elevation. Now, I'm looking at the basin, that would fill that basin halfway full or or more with water before any storm ever got into it. How does that? How does that work? Because you're going to have a flow in that basin all the time based on the the elevations of the water that potentially could be in there.
Yeah, so the micro pool extended detention basins and the pocket pond will have per order or expected to have permanent pools in the bottom of them, and it's going to be controlled by the low-flow orifice. So let's look at one-ten. Find those details again. So the bottom of that basin is one sixteen. Now, back to one-ten. Our low-flow orifice is a half a foot above the bottom, so there's there's probably going to be six inches depending on how we microwave the grade the bottom or more of water that's going to be permanently in the bottom of that basin during the, not likely through the entire year, but likely there would be groundwater feeding that through the spring and the, you know, the wet season. There's a potential that there could be, you you also noticed that we're close to the wet ones there. You know, the the wet ones adjacent there, an indication of where groundwater breaks out on a more frequent basis, which is why we have the natural wetland corridor through there. So it's not surprising that as the basins get closer to the wet ones, we see the groundwater coming up in the test pits. So we've considered that as part of the designs.
So so you're not counting any of that for storage in those basins, correct?
We don't account for it for the detention volume. But part of that permanent pool, according to the DEP stormwater manual requirements, is allowed to be counted for the water quality volume. And it's some percentage based on the type of pond.
Right, right. No, I understand and and I.
Yeah, it's the same thing with the micro pool extended detention basin. We recognize there's going to be pool on the bu- um, permanent pools in the bottom. And the detention storage is all above the potential permanent pool elevations.
Yeah, my concern was even if you were very conservative, um, groundwater during, I mean, the spring, the springtime, when the groundwater is the highest and we get the most rain. You know, it to be, I mean, even if we went with a one nineteen, you mean, that pool, that the pool is going to be uh, detention basin potentially going to be full for the spring, and then you're going to have a spring storm. So that that was kind of my concern, and if any, you know, anything can be done to try to, you know, I I don't know if there's anything that can be done to alleviate that, but it just seems like there's going to be a lot of water in there, and I understand that's the design, just seems, you know, may need a little bit more evaluation, I guess, is how I would look at it, but. So I think that was that. The the other thing in a general, in a general um, question on the, just the drainage areas as a whole. You had mentioned the other parcel that was cut out, the gas station. Just for your, for your reference, and so you understand that all that entire site drains to, um, I guess it would be the south. And and it's just not included in your detention calculations? And then in act, I I know I'm changing up a little bit here, but I was just looking at the the overall detention or 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 stormwater drainage basins.
Yes, I thought we explained that in the the one of the comment responses.
Yeah, well, you you said it doesn't drain that way, and I have a map in front of me from that site plan that shows that it all drains that way. Um, the only things that don't drain to that area are the the two roof, are the roof, the roofs there, they drain to the north into the brook. So it just wasn't accounted for in the overall drainage calculations, draining toward that. In the Route eighty-five.
So that wasn't included in our stormwater comps, because that does drain towards, you're correct, it does drain south towards Hartford Turnpike. But it crosses Hartford Turnpike through a cross culvert further north of our entrance drive. So that that runoff doesn't go through any of the stormwater management on our site. So that's why we didn't include it.
Okay, all right. Now I would just, I guess I was more concerned about the, and maybe this is a DOT issue that there, you, there is going to be a, an increase going, or potential increase in in that culvert going across Route eighty-five.
Well, there actually isn't going to be, because we we take some of the watershed that drains down towards Route eighty-five, towards the the gas station now, and actually route that watershed through our stormwater management basin. So we're, even even though there's some development area in that, we've reduced the watershed that drains to that culvert. And and therefore have reduced the amount of water that goes down that way. So we've managed it by um, the change in the watershed area.
Okay, okay.
Watershed maps. Fortunately, the drainage report is large, and when I'm on Zoom, it's hard, often hard to open large documents.
Yeah, no, it's true.
Well, it's cooperating. So here's the existing conditions, watersheds.
Yep.
And we have watershed thirty, which drains down in this direction. And we didn't include the gas station parcel and part of the watershed, because there's no change in the land use there. But we do have a portion of the site that drains down to, I believe this is the cross culvert here. So what we're looking at is any change in watershed thirty that might drain off here. We can't have an increase going in this direction. And and the same thing here with watershed twenty to this crossover. So if you go to the proposed watershed map, you'll see the watershed thirty gets smaller. Because the development area here is directed into our stormwater management on site. And the same thing happens for watershed twenty. So these two, the watershed area themselves is reduced. And therefore, we show at analysis point C and analysis point B that we don't have an increase. You can see the difference in, if I flip back and forth, if it goes quickly.
Yes.
Reduction in the watershed. So that's how we.
No, I appreciate that. Appreciate you going through that with me. It was one other, one other question. So just, just. You, you did, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You you did mention about uh, whether there's any large watersheds that drain to the stormwater basins. Uh, like over twenty acres. So our our whole disturbed acre for acreage for the site is fifteen point eight acres. And you can see on here under proposed conditions that these watersheds are are broken up pretty substantially. So this, you know, the watershed goes to this basin and is treated here. And granted, these are strung together, so eventually they all get to basin one ten. You can see part of that development area on the roadway here also drains around this way. So I don't believe that the watershed even to basin one ten is more than the the total disturbed area of fifteen acres. A lot of the existing watershed comes down through here to wetlands and doesn't drain into our collection system. So I don't think we have any um, overly large watersheds that we're managing. The basins are sized to accommodate that change in land cover uh, from the working condition to the developed condition.
This is actually not a question for the applicant or the engineer, but um, it kind of goes to the commission. Um, and and what I did when I went to look into the plan, I was just making sure it met all our requirements that we're required to do, that we're, you know, to review the plan. And one of the things came up I talked to to staff about it, Abby and Mark regarding um, maybe this is a discussion for a further, further day, but another day, another meeting. But it requires that we get sign offs from other entities, uh, you know, the state DOT or whatever, the case, you know, approachment permits or whatever. But things have changed over the years. And I don't know if we need to change our regulations to go with the change of way, the way things are done now, because it does require that there's evidence shown. Although I don't know that that policy has ever really followed in in past, but um, I I just, it's more of a question to staff and to, you know, the other commission members, just how we address some of these, these things that come up. Like I, I just went through section twenty-two. I believe it was in section twenty-two where it says um, evidence of submission to different agencies, so. That was all for that. I just wanted to bring that, bring that out, because we'll obviously have some other jobs that will, or other reviews that will be on state highways or other stuff like that. So I think at that point, all my questions have been answered. I guess I'll be done.
Okay, can whoever's sharing the screen, can you take that down? Okay, Mr. Ritz, do you have anything else that you wanted to present this evening?
No, that that completes our our presentation. I I've made notes of of uh, some of the clarifications that you've requested. But we uh, that that completes our our presentation.
Okay, anybody else, Joe or Karen, have any uh, other questions or comments for the team here?
No. The only comment I would have is that I think the property looks nice. I think this was a a really nice presentation. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I agree. Thank you.
Very nice. Okay, so um, that's it for item number five. Thank you for everyone for your time and and your presentation.
Do we assume this is continued to the twenty-second while we supplement?
Uh, yes, but please try to get any of the things before, as as early as you can.
Oh, yes.
We're trying to look through this uh, some of the things last minute, trying to get this done for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank all you members of the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, correspondence.
Um, we had a a letter that was was submitted to the commission that was part of the testimony for the public hearing for the opt-out from Tim Condorino or uh, Tim and Kim Condorino. I, that was included in that public hearing. It was also submitted because there's comments in it relative to potential regulations on accessory dwelling units. But you've got that already in your, in your record.
Okay, that's the only thing. Okay, uh, item number seven, commission business appointment of DRB members.
So we have um, a couple of folks who their terms have expired, but they've provided email interest and and confirmed that they're interested and willing to serve through this this term. And so we just want to make sure that everybody's appointments are up to date. We're going through every boarding commission and every appointed body that that makes recommendations to board the commissions through the town clerk's office to make sure everybody is current. So John and and Ed have been participating for some time, and Ed would certainly like to continue.
Okay, so do we just make a motion? You want, I mean, you're asking us to approve these two tonight?
Yeah, ba- it basically would be a motion to appoint individually John and then Ed to the terms of of May fourth, twenty-one to May fourth, twenty-four. Well, right, so the, and then there's the vacant term that exists. We we just don't have a member to to fill right now.
Okay, so someone to make a motion for those two appointments?
Um, I'll make an appointment, uh, motion, sorry. I'll make a motion to continue the appointment of designer review board member John O'Neill. We vote separately, right?
Yep.
There was second for John.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Karen and second by Ken to uh, appoint John O'Neill for a term expiring five four twenty-four of the designer review board. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, another motion?
I can do it again. Uh, make a motion to continue the appointment of Ed.
Belvery.
Edward, how do you say it?
Oh, I agree.
I agree. To put the term through May fourth, twenty twenty-four on the design report.
I can.
Okay, motion made, second by Karen and Ken to point Ed Pelleri to the designer review board, where the term expires five four twenty-four. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Uh, and the vacancy, we'll just wait to see if somebody comes along. Item B, a review of past months and ongoing projects.
So very, very briefly, um, I know we've talked about some potential development projects that that folks have discussed with the commission um, relative to the former Papagena site and and other other types of of projects. A lot of these were are still either in preliminary discussion with staff, or we are just waiting for folks to complete their engineering and and get their application packages together. So um, things that we originally thought were going to be coming in this timeframe, it sounds like maybe pushed off to the next month or two. So that's uh, that's kind of where things are now.
Okay, wait, do we have the list?
Oh, I thought we discussed not going through the list tonight, that that, because it was substantially similar to the previous.
Oh.
Nothing that's really changed in terms of submittal status from the twenty-fifth. Everybody's kind of in a holding pattern while they get their their engineering and application packages in order.
Okay, great. Is that the same for upcoming projects? Nothing new on that?
Same, same, substantially the same, yeah.
Okay. Item number eight, administrative review. Uh, let's do um, let's just do some of the quick ones. See the uh, schedule and next steps for the affordable housing plan. We're going to have a special meeting coming up in in two weeks and then one in three weeks.
Well, so what we have is Glenn Chalder will be on Zoom for a pu- a virtual public meeting on the twenty-second, the hour before the commission's meeting, regular meeting on the twenty-second to make sure that people have an opportunity to see the plan, understand kind of what's going on, look at the draft as as it says, it's come to you in its uh, preliminary draft format, so that he can start to gather comments to to come up with a a final draft of this plan as we go forward. So on the twenty-second, from five thirty to six thirty, that would be a Zoom link. He would host that meeting at six thirty for the regular meeting. He would come over to the commission and have a similar discussion with the commission members in particular to start to get your feedback. Folks have had the plan for a little while now. If you have comments or questions that you want to send to me ahead of time, it would be absolutely helpful to to do that. We're trying to get as many comments as we can in in this period between now and the twenty-second, so that Glenn has some material to work with. But the twenty-second, um, the first part of that meeting would be um, devoted to him and the commission, and then get into regular business directly after, because he has to leave for another hearing shortly after that. The next piece is based on whatever feedback comes in on the twenty-second. He's holding the twenty-ninth for a special meeting with the commission to discuss, as I said, the the public input. Your input and any changes that he's made to the draft and show you what those are. So that you, so we have a kind of working session um, specifically devoted to this plan on the twenty-ninth. And the reason for that is that the um, the plan is sort of marching ahead to this deadline of the statutory deadline of June first for adoption. And so what that does is it gives us time to work in public hearing um, on May tenth. So that that, you know, so we would be able to, on the twenty-ninth, finalize any comments, incorporate them, and and be able to put a draft out to the public for their official review in advance for a thirty-five day notice period in time to make a May tenth public hearing. The reason we're shooting for that May tenth is that if there's any changes, questions, additions, things you want to see in in process before a final draft is is officially adopted, uh, that gives us an extra meeting in between to to accommodate that. So we're sort of at the deadline of where statute is, and and this is kind of the the available schedule that we have with Glenn to to make it happen. So it would be useful for folks to look at their calendars and let me know if there are any conflicts on the twenty-ninth, and whether or not anybody won't be able to attend a special meeting um, with Glenn that night. And we can certainly, because it's a special meeting, we can modify times or whatever else. Everybody can just email me directly, and I'll try to coordinate.
If we can, if we can get a notice, uh, an agenda out for the special meeting before the next meeting, so everybody can put it on their calendar.
Yep.
Because I, I, that's an hour before the meeting. I just want to make sure everybody's gonna have that on their calendar.
Yep, and we're also, yeah, so so the special meeting, this is the twenty-second is not a special meeting of the commission. It is, it is a public discussion for the hour before the commission's regular meeting, for the general public to work with our consultant to give feedback, ask questions, and those types of things. Then he'll go over what he heard. Any, anyone is welcome to attend. But we, so you'll get the Zoom link for that. There will be a separate Zoom link at six thirty for the regular meeting of the commission, so we don't kind of confuse applicants and and that kind of stuff.
Right, just in case anybody be there.
Yep, we'll absolutely get that out. You're also, we're also putting flyers out. There's going to be some social media postings going out this week, some website posting, so we'll try to really blast it to make sure that it's coming.
Okay.
One quick thing is that that social media stuff seemed to work pretty good.
It did, yeah.
Send out to the Waterford Community Group and the police, the police, so it worked good. Thank you.
No, no problem. I think that's just kind of the way to go as we, as we go forward, so.
Great, okay. And I'm sorry, we went out of order, because there are people here um, waiting for the amendments to accessory dwelling units. So let's do take that next, it's a, so I I didn't realize that people were still here. But um, so let's open that up, uh, the administrative view of the potential amendments to the accessory dwelling units and.
So this is, so this discussion was, the the consideration of opt-out was was earlier in the agenda, and it seems like folks were, we closed the public hearing. And and so we'll need to decide kind of where you want to go with the opt-out discussion. This discussion was meant to be the preliminary chat about the content of potential regulations going forward. Um, and it it really is tied to that opt-out decision. And so I don't know if you want to have that conversation now. I do have the the most recent draft that we've done that I can pull up on the screen. Um, that I can pull up on the screen and we can kind of go through it, or we can, I think some of that stuff that's sent out to folks, we can also. You know, send it, send it out again and ask folks to give direct feedback and and try to get something if there's any amendments to it together. But this, this would.
So it's a little presumptuous to go over the new amendments if we haven't opted out, so. Why, why don't we, why don't we put the opting out discussion and acting on it on the next agenda?
Yeah, okay.
That a good for everyone?
Yes. Yep.
I have to say, I was surprised that there wasn't more, um, public participation tonight on that. Issue, but, um. We will act on it on the 22nd for anybody who's who's here. Again, that will only be acting on the opting out portion of it. Uh, and then going over these regulations in the future, but if anybody was here, wants to see some. Action that we're going on the accessory dwelling units. Uh, we do have. That item on the agenda, right, that they can ask, they can call your office, Abby, and get those?
Absolutely, so that's, that's all publicly available. And again, it's just a draft, um. But but it's, you know, folks can certainly take a look to see where the commission has been discussing in the past and and go from there. I think that's also up, I should be up on the website as well, um, so we'll we'll make sure it's there as well, and then, um. We'll, we'll continue on with that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was going to ask, have you not opted out yet? Is that simple?
Um. We have not opted out yet. We didn't act on it this evening.
Okay.
We just had a public hearing, um, and then we close the public hearing, we'll act on it in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, item number B, discussion of potential amendments to parking regulations.
This one, we had talked about pushing to a future meeting. This is a fairly straightforward amendment to. Include ITE standards in the way parking generation is calculated in addition to and in concert with our existing regulations. Um, it came up as a as a concern for a particular, um, uh, property owner, but we were able to. Get them to the parking calculation based on the way our regulations are currently written, and so the question now is for us to go back and massage. So, um.
Is there any application pending now that this would benefit?
Not that I'm aware of. You had one that that got resolved.
Right, yeah, well.
Okay, so one, yeah, the one was resolved, so why don't we just move this off to the next meeting as well? Uh, and we can do all the regulation changes at the same time, so we don't. Get into too much modification, um, helter skelter, so. Is that good, what everyone too? Okay. And we just have the discussion of the potential amendments to the accessory outdoor dining.
So we have a draft regulation, um, that's out there that we had been circulating on the the presumption that. The the expiration of executive order permissions under 7MM would be expiring at the end of this month, which right now they are set to do. Um, and then after April 1st, there is a requirement to sort of allow outdoor dining as an accessory to, um. Any other out, any dining or or service, service use. There is legislation pending right now, um, it's a raised bill and I think it's a planning committee to extend that sort of executive order scenario. And for one more year so that we wouldn't be in a scenario of having to adopt new regulations. Um, you know, perhaps for another year, but we are in kind of a no man's land until we know what is happening with that regulation. I think it. It warrants, um, you know, adopting something that we will be comfortable with regardless of where this goes and and really addressing, uh, proactively the the permanent. Accessory outdoor dining provision as contemplated in statute, um, they're just, it's just the legislature is considering. Giving towns another year to get their regulations amended to be compliant with the new legislation, so. There may be some more wheelroom depending on where the session goes, but in the meantime, um, it would be really good, I think, to. Get your feedback on the draft outdoor dining regulation and then know what draft we would like to generally circulate to the public for their comment. And then we can go into the formal public hearing process and then the reg amendment, but it would be good, we're we're sort of at the stage now of. Getting your feedback so that we can provide something from the commission to the public, um. And and get a final draft together.
Any comments on the, on the, on the outdoor dining so that we can get that to Mark and Abby and maybe get this acted on at the next meeting as well?
I just quickly, I I don't even. I guess I'm a little bit late. To this one, I don't really understand where this came from. I understand. People were doing it because of the pandemic, but. Um, is it an actual, is it law now? Is there? It's okay, this, I don't even, this is the first I've heard of it. So I knew that people were doing it, but I didn't know it was a specific law that passed.
It's been, it's been under discussion at the commission a couple of times in terms of the suite of regulations and then new statutes that passed in the last legislative session. Um, and so basically the way that that broke out was. There were some parameters and standards for things that happened before the end of this month, and then there was a permanent. Sort of scenario in which towns were obligated to by right. Allow accessory outdoor dining where permitted, other dining is already allowed. And so, so the legislation still says that, um, in its current form. But there is an amendment coming that that is working its way through the approval process that would say instead of April 1st of 22, it would be 23. Um, we don't know where that's going to go yet, so. Uh, so we're sort of operating under the presumption that as of April 1st. We have a legislative obligation to permit. Accessory outdoor dining subject to whatever standards the commission adopts. And I think that's what we're trying to get to here is what are the standards by which we will adopt, and if we're ready to go right away, that's awesome. And if it takes us another year and that legislation goes through to give us to enable that time, that's okay too. Um. From a, from an enforcement and permitting perspective, it's nice for us to have those standards in place sooner rather than later. It also makes it a little more predictable for. Um, our restaurant owners in town as they're kind of contemplating what they want to do with their properties. So it would be great to have your feedback on it, um, but it is ultimately, we, it is a use that has been. Sort of inserted into, um, the legislation that that we're obligated to deal with. Right away. And perhaps we have a year to do it, but we don't know that yet.
So I think it's a, it's a good time to go over it. I, I, the only. The only comment I have on this proposal and I and I and I like it on that is. Is I'm not sure why we're making a difference between live music and candid music or karaoke or anything else. Uh, if it, if it's subject to. The noise ordinance, I don't think it really matters to me. What type of music it is.
Yeah.
And I think so, again, I think, um. It's a point well taken. I think it's a matter of discussion for the commission. I think that there was a. Desire not to implicitly allow event style. Activity or other performances, um, that would have the potential to cause more of an impact to surrounding. Properties, um, especially knowing that the noise ordinance is likely to be the subject of some. Consideration at the RTM, um, as to whether or not it's effectiveness, it's whether the decibel levels or where folks want to see them and and those types of things. So it's, but again, it's, it's, it's up for. For discussion both with the commission and also I think with with the general public.
Well, I mean, i- if. If the RTM decides on a, on a. Decibel level or not a decibel level or a noise ordinance or not a noise ordinance. I don't think that's really our concern. Our concern is. These regulations and for the purposes of our regulations. I don't think it matters what type of music it is. It's just. Anybody else have any comments on this, as proposed?
Me, the only thing that that I, that I'm. Kind of struggling with a little bit. Is taking up parking spaces. Um. And then the safety around the areas. You know, that are taken up by parking spaces. You know, if 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 the existing use is a restaurant. And they're required so many seats or so many, they're allowed so many seats. And we allow. More seats outdoors. Now we've just expanded a a use that was not allowed. Right?
Why, so the. The basics of this is that you can be permitted in parking lots, provided you are in conformance with section 20 of the regulations. And if you had what is opened up under sub B, that sort of double, uh, double I, uh, number, there'd be two. So dining can be permitted in parking lots adjacent to the primary is provided that adequate parking in conformance with section 20 of these regulations is provided onsite. Or by written agreement with an owner of contiguous property. So in this particular case, it opens up the opportunity for, um. If there is somebody who's operating in a multi tenant. Site, they could, if if hours of operation worked out and and sort of the balance of parking overall. Was appropriate, there could be opportunities to share the broader parking and and sort of spread out that burden across the site. The other, um, would be if they have a contiguous property where you, you have pedestrian access and it's literally touching and you have the ability to get back and forth. That someone could have an an ease, an agreement. Um, and we may need to, we may even need to say easement here if it's going to be. Um, something a little bit more permanent, but it was similar to what we've done in Mega Point. You can, you can share that parking burden over contiguous properties, um, in order to. Expand some, some uses without significant impact to a neighborhood.
I guess the only thing I'd like to see is some sort of. Analysis by whoever showing that. You know, that the times and the permitted uses, so like a shared parking, um, analysis. That in in that, in that case or or something to that effect unless there's, that's already required underneath, under the regulations.
So that that would be done as part of the staff evaluation for section 20. And so if folks were not making permanent changes, um, that could be done by the zoning official. Or if there were permanent changes proposed to the site, then the, then that analysis would be presented in planning and zoning commission. They would have to prove that, that what, so because it's subject, it's under the all, all accessory outdoor dining shall be subject to the following provisions. Though that the compliance with section 20 has to be established, and the only way you get to that is to show. That you have the available minimum records of parking under section 20 in order to go forward. So typically. Past site plan approvals are going to get, you know, trotted out and then reviewed and, you know, if if tendency has changed in current mix of uses. That parking calculation will be updated, um, and then folks can go from there.
Aren't we expanding the use at this point?
That is a statutory decision that was made by the legislature on our behalf. It's meant to be. Accessory to, not an expansion of sort of the primary use, the use itself is is already allowed. And so provided that it doesn't meet any other, or doesn't violate any other sort of dimensional or. Capa- site capacity, um, issues. Yes, there could, there could be an expansion, and I think that's also why we've tried to put in. The provision where it's truly minor, um, and and there's no permanent physical change to the, to the property, exterior of the property. You can do that by zoning compliance, but if you're going to do anything that requires a permanent change to the site. Um, you know, certainly that has to go for site plan review. You can also consider some threshold to say. Under this square footage or this number of seats or this percentage of your previously permitted. You know, cur- you know, primary use, you're fine for zoning compliance, but over a certain percentage, you're coming to the commission for approval anyway. So you can, you can run it that way, too.
Can you take that down, Emma? Ken, do you have any other, uh, comments on it?
No, I, I, it's the kind of, I'm just starting to digest it, so.
Well, we want to try to have that on the next meeting to be acted on along with the. Parking regulations, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think we can because we have, so if we're. Act, we, I think what we need to do is get on to a final draft by that, you know, sort of say. Officially, this is the draft the commission is putting out for officially to to provide legal notice to the public, and then we have to do our advertising and go through the notice procedures. And and get, you know, do the paper advertising and and all of that.
Right, but we can. We can have the public hearing at the next meeting if this, if this is sufficient, correct?
Not the public hearing for adoption, because we have to provide legal notice. So we can have, we can have a public input session, we could, we could, you know, sort of blast this out and say, you know, the commission is going to have a conversation. We'd like to have a, you know, sort of a listening conver- just a conversation with the public about this draft regulation before. We officially go to adopt, but we haven't, we haven't advertised this for a public hearing for adoption, so we still need to meet the the provisions under statute for that.
Okay. That being said, do we have any comments or should we be moving forward with this particular? Draft?
I just don't want to make sure, I mean, I I don't mind. The i- the idea is is good. I'm just, my concern is. These accessories can become permanent, that that would be my only. You know, it always seems to do that people, you know, that you give them an inch, they take a foot and and again, I think. Oh, we have a tent here, now we're going to close a tent in, now it's going to be a more permanent tent, now it's, now walls start going up and. You know, now you're, I mean, now you've just, you've, but again, it goes back to the site plan. Part of it, but that that would be my only concern is that there's some. Just to make sure that it's. That it can't be permanent, like you were saying, Abby.
Uh, it 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 is permanent, Ken. It's it's accessory. But it wouldn't be permanent.
So then, either they would get a zoning compliance permit for their seasonal. You know, non-permanent tent or patio or, you know, just throwing out the picnic tables on the the patio or the sidewalk or whatever. Subject to the standards, so they're either going to zone in compliance permit that carries forward and as long as they're a restaurant, as long as there, that anyone is doing that use, it could, you could roll over. If they're to see if their parameters don't change, they can continue forward in perpetuity. But the second they do something permanent, they've got to amend the site plan. And then again, that would also be a permanent approval to, as long as that use was was being enacted on the site.
Okay. Okay.
And that the legislature was very, was, has been very clear on on that, you know, this is, this is the law now that, you know, come April 1. It's, it's effectively a use by right and it's, you know, it's up to the the commissions to to establish just the the standards by which they will permit them.
Okay, no, I I I hear you, I guess. For some reason, I don't know why I had. I blocked this out. I I just, it seemed like this is the first time I read it, but I probably read it before, so I don't, I don't, that's why I'm, I guess I'm asking so many questions.
I think we had a conversation about it, but this, this is the first time this draft has been sent out.
So does, so does anybody have any other concerns about this draft or can the staff move forward with this particular draft? I think it's a good, my opinion is, I think it's a good draft. I I think it's a great. Regulation to have, so.
I think, I think it would just be helpful for us if we knew. If there are particular things like removing the type of of music or or, you know, noise references and those types of things. I think we just want to know what specific changes you want to see to the draft before we go to advertise a draft for adoption. That would really be the. And then the other question is, do you want this period between now and the 22nd to be an opportunity to send things out to some restaurant owners? To get some feedback from them while it's still in this draft form for anything we may not have thought of. Um, and then on the 22nd settle on the content and and move it forward for an April adoption. That's, that's up to the commission.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. That's fine, so we'll get some commentary from the restaurants before the 22nd.
We'll ask them, yep.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll. And then we'll put it on again, the 22nd. To hopefully keep moving this forward, so.
Okay.
All right. Um. That's it, right?
I believe so.
Hey, this is our longest meeting in a long time. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, mo- motion made by Karen, seconded by Ken to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you, good night. Thank you.
Thank you.